Okay, I'd like to call the meeting, work session of November 5th, between the Board of County Commissioners and the Children's Services Advisory Board. I think at this point, just maybe the first, if we could just quickly go around the room, everybody kind of introduce themselves, and so that the clerk can get the names and know who everybody is, and we don't need a long resume, just kind of state your name and, you know, what your position is. So, maybe, and speak into your mic, again, these mics are not real sensitive, so.
Your name is Ava.
No, no, I recognize that, it was just part of the agenda, that Xavier was going to speak about some of her advisory board members. My name is Ava Edie, I'm the Neighborhood Services Director for Manatee County, thank you.
Susan Ford, Human Services Program Manager for Children's Services.
Can I ask a question?
Already?
No, I... I, no, I just want to make sure, what I was told before the meeting, that are we following the agenda, or are we going to change it? As we were asked for the CSAB members to introduce themselves, and then give a little bit about their experience, so are we just...
You can do that when you introduce yourself.
Yeah, they can do that.
Just making sure, if that's what they were notified to do. Is that okay?
Have at it, why not? Women.
That means we get five minutes extra. He's being so timely. Xavier Bailey, I am the Chair this year, I've been on the Board since October of 2014. A little bit of my background, I've ran, been an Executive Director for AmeriCAN for three counties across Florida, where we taught in classrooms, I've also been a Director of Boys and Girls Club, and I also am a very active community child advocate in the community. Is that good, Steve?
That's great.
Okay.
Good job. I'm Steve Johnson, County Commissioner. Oops.
Betsy Benak, County Commissioner.
Marcella Trace, County Commissioner.
Reggie Bellamy, County Commissioner.
I'm Amy Dis, I'm a Child Advocate for the Children's Services Advisory Board, I was appointed in October of 2018. I was born and raised in Michigan, I've been in Florida just under 10 years, I have 20-plus years of social services experience, both direct client and administrative, and I'm a Cheerleading Coach, and I got involved with this, when I got involved with the Guardian at Lightem program, I really got to see what our kids needed in the community, so I thought this would be a great next step.
Hi, everybody, I'm brand new here, I've been to a couple of meetings so far. What got me involved is I adopted a child from foster care, she was 10-years-old, and now she, this month will be 30-years-old. And I'm very happy and proud of her. I spent 30-years working with many different nonprofits with children with cancer, I work at John Hopkins in the Palliative Care Team, and I'm a grief counselor, and our hospital recently promoted volunteering in the community, so I thought it was a great way, I hear most of these organizations come out of our hospitals, that we refer children to.
What's your name?
Karen Hanson.
Karen Hanson.
Did I not say that?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Karen Hanson, there you go twice. Thank you.
I'm Gina Messenger, and I, I think I've been on the CSAB for about two-years. I'm, was a kindergarten teacher and a first-grade teacher, I grew up in Manatee County, Manatee High graduate, so, go Canes, go. And I'm a school board member, and I was elected as a school member in 2016, and I represent District One, which is a lot of the area north of the river, and parts of north of 64, south of the river.
Hi, I'm Kristy Higgins, Senior Human Services Analyst.
James Slusser, Human Services Analyst.
Hi, I'm Debbie Taff, I'm the United Way representative for the CSAB, on the CSAB. I've been a resident of Manatee County 40-plus years, so I know a lot of you, I've been around social services all of that time, as a volunteer board member, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't remember how long I've been on the CSAB, but it's been a long time, a little minute.
George Van Buren, Pediatrician.
No, no, no.
I'm Kim Kutch, I'm with the Department of Children and Families, I've been there for almost 20-years now, and I think I've been on the Board since like 2002 or '03.
Hi, I'm Gail Nguyen, I have been on the Board since September of 2018, I'm a Child Advocate. The reason that I came to the Board was because I was, like Amy, with the Guardian at Lightem program, I was with them for 17-years here in the 12th Judicial District, excuse me, seven-years in the 12th Judicial District, and there were lots of times where there was many blessings, but there was also times where I felt like, if I had gotten in before the family had started to become more dis, as dysfunctional as they were, maybe I could make a larger difference, and so I transitioned from that to this. And I can also bring my background with AT&amp;T as a General Manager for the States, two different states, and skills that I've had in new product development, to the process of evaluating and funding some of these wonderful programs. Thank you.
Hi, Sandra Stone, I'm a professor at the University of South Florida-Sarasota, Manatee, and I'm Vice Chair of the Children's Services Advisory Board, this is my third year on the Board. Before going into academia, I was a social worker, and I worked in a hospital, and I worked in child protective services, and I ran a children's program at the battered women's shelter in Atlanta, and I also worked in the Department of Juvenile Justice, so have a long history of being involved with kids and families, and my current, my research interest as an academic are juvenile delinquency and the juvenile justice system, family violence, and women in crime.
I'm a lifelong resident of Manatee County, and I was going to say something else about myself, I'm suddenly drawing a blank.
Your name, your name, sir? Your name?
My name is Mickey Palmer.
Okay.
I'm your county attorney since the spring of 2012.
And he's got a great singing voice.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sherry Corriere, your County Administrator, and I can say, we sat Dr. Van Buren next to Debbie, so that she would keep him from speaking out, and it worked. And that's just a joke, because we always have to get, Dr. Van Buren's got a lot of good stuff to say, and he's been on this Board a long time, so has Debbie, but I think I own, I think I own the longest-running stint with the Children's Services Advisory Board, since it was created in 1991, so it's one of my favorite Boards, and the hardest-working volunteer group that is appointed by this Board of County Commissioners, and I'd like to thank you all and the staff.
Wow.
Vanessa Ball, Manatee County Commissioner, I've been on the Board since 2012, and I can tell you, from my standpoint, and I dare say I'm probably speaking for every Commissioner here, this Advisory Board is, if not the most important, one of the most important that the County Commission gets to be involved with, and so I thank you for all of your volunteer time and your dedication to our youth. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I'm Misty Servia, County Commissioner, District Four.
Carol Whitmore, County Commissioner, District Six, I have the whole county, I'm still a practicing nurse, and I've been on the Board since 2006, and I've known Dr. Van Buren since the first day he came into Manatee County, and I gave him an orientation at Manatee Hospital.
Okay, anything else I missed, anybody that I'd like to add? I knew we'd get to it eventually. So, according to the agenda, Ava, your show.
I'd just like to also introduce, in addition to Kristy and James at the end of the table, we also have Chris Handy-Honnycutt, and he is a Human Services Analyst with this area, and Lawanda Timmins, and she is a Senior Human Services Analyst, so that comprises, along with Susan, our Children's Services Staff.
Okay, next is, I guess Susan's going to give us a little history of this Advisory Board.
Yeah, if we can rewind just for a second, Xavier has something to share with just how hard this Board does work.
So, really quick, I just wanted to, as members of the Advisory Board, we do want to thank you for allowing us to serve our community and be able to service the children in need, but we just want to give you a little bit of a, you know, overall volunteer hours and the things that we actually do, this is actually a working board, the volunteers, and together, the 12 of us have logged about 1,700-hours in the past year. Each has spent an average of 142-hours of their time, six-and-a-half-hours at the annual retreat, six-hours in research of local, state, and federal statistics, and best practices, about a half-an-hour in our application system training, eight-hours over the six regular monthly meetings, nine-plus-hours in funding cycle meetings, 106-hours reviewing applications for funding, six-hours reviewing responses to follow-up funding applications and questions. So I thank the Board also for everything that you do.
Okay, on to the history. As Sherry alluded, this started in November 6, 1990, when 51% of the voters passed a tax dedicated to ensuring the health, welfare, and safety of Manatee County's children. The language on the ballot, in case you're interested, said yes or no to this, shall Manatee County fund additional services and programs for abused, neglected, economically disadvantaged children by implementation of an ad valorem tax of not less than 1/20th of a mil in 1991, and increasing annually to 1/3rd of a mil in 1995 and thereafter, in accordance with Resolution R. 91169. The tax was called the Children's Services Dedicated Millage, and was designated, designed, excuse me, to generate funds for the enhancement of existing children's program services delivery in the county. On July 9, 1991, the Children's Services Ordinance was adopted, thanks to Sherry, and many others, and it was to implement and provide for the Dedicated Millage. It outlines the general terms and conditions under which the county shall fund, develop, and provide operation of programs. This includes the enhancement and expansion of existing programs, as well as implementation of new and innovative programs for prevention and treatment for residents who are neglected, abused, at risk for economically disadvantaged children under the age 18. The ordinance paved the way for the establishment of the 13-members Children's Services Advisory Board, and most of which you've met today. The purpose of the CSAB is to make recommendation for the use of funds, to consult with various agencies involved in the delivery of children's services, to minimize duplication of services, and to complete other duties assigned by the Board of County Commissioners. In the beginning, the fund was approximately $300,000, and paid for seven programs. Today, the millage enhances the services providing a wide variety of different programs costing approximately $12-million, for 52 programs. All of these, both of these programs are required to document measurable results that benefit Manatee County's children and their families. By January 30 of each year, we're required to submit an annual plan and report to the Commissioners, which serves to provide a record of prior fiscal year expenses and level of service provided, the state of the community data on the current year, and the priorities for the coming fiscal year. The prior-year plan has been provided today in your materials, along with several sections of the pending plan and report, which you'll get before the end of January, and we're going to cover those in upcoming sections of the agenda. That's it for the history.
Okay, now, I think you still have the floor going on to the...
I do, they gave me two parts, I don't know why, maybe because I'm in the...
We know how you are.
Oh, thank you, okay.
What are we following, I keep, everybody said I'm following the agenda, and I don't see...
It's in the back portion of your packet, about...
It's page 41 is the agenda that we're following?
Yeah.
The one they just passed out again? Okay.
Yeah, there's an agenda kind of in the middle of there.
Thank you.
We've got lots of agendas here today.
Okay, this is about the Florida Children's Services Council. The Council, the Children's Services Council is administer county funds to programs that benefit children and their families, and all councils collect information and statistical data, monitor program provider performance, and conduct local strategic planning. Essentially, councils serve as the hub of child advocacy in a county, bringing together the right people, organizations, and funding opportunities to ensure a brighter future for our children and youth. No other public entity provides this kind of umbrella for leadership, coordination, and oversight of efforts focused on children. While the services offered and age groups served vary depending on the needs of the community, the primary focus is investing in prevention and early intervention programs, which reduces the need for more costly services later in life. There's a Board of Directors for the Florida Children's Services Council, which consists of CEOs or heads of councils, there's only nine counties that have this, or 13% of our counties. They are Children's Trust of Alachua County, the CSC of Broward County, Children's Board of Hillsborough County, Kids Hope Alliance, which is the city of Jacksonville, the CSC of Martin County, Children's Trust of Miami Dade, Children's Services Council of Palm Beach County, St. Lucy County, and our county. The Juvenile Welfare Board of Pinellas is a CSC, but they are not a member of this Council, and the Council has been asked to assist Escambia and Orange Counties, who plan to put something on the ballot next year. As we speak, the Florida Children's Council is holding their annual legislative meeting in the Capitol in Tallahassee. Normally, our CSAB Chair and I would participate, but this work session took precedence. Today, the Council meeting is with Secretaries of the Department of Children and Families, Juvenile Justice, the Director of Office of Learning, Early Learning, several Senators and Representatives who serve on committees that address children's issues. In your packets, you were provided two documents from the Florida Children's Services Council, I'm not going to go over those, but I'm going to tell you what they are. Both begin with seven guiding principles, with which we practice those as well. The first document is the Council's Public Policy Priorities for 2020, which is divided into three categories. The lead items, where the Council actually is actively engaged with legislative members and staff in an effort to influence legislative outcomes. Support, which is issues of the Council, but not anticipated to be a primary focus. And monitoring, which is issues that are potential, requiring the Council's attention in the future, but specifics are not well-known. The second document is the 2020 Public Policy Agenda, which contains more in-depth explanations of the items which the overall Council is concerned about. Although our county aligns with these items in principle, we would not effectively, we could not effectively address them without being a member of the Florida Children's Council. That's all I have.
Okay, next, I guess, is James on State of the Community.
Yes, sir.
Where are you?
This is in this part of the pamphlet here, the State of the Community part, so you can follow along with the numbers that we will be looking at.
Page 22. Page 22.
So it starts with child welfare, welfare, you will see, some of the, some of the subheadings will have two-bar graphs, when they do have two-bar graphs, the number on top is the most recent data, lots of times it's from 2017, 2018. So in child welfare, Manatee County dependent children exiting to a permanent home for 17-18 was 38.6, that is down just a little bit from the year before. However, kids who did not re-enter foster home within 12 months of moving to a permanent home was up to 91.9%, so that was a little uptick. The family strengthening and support part, this information was taken from the 2016, which is the newest data that we have, Florida Youth Substance Abuse Survey, this is all individual Manatee County data. There was a 53% protective factor prevalence rate, so this means that these are conditions that buffer kids, that enable them to have a better chance of having good social outcomes in family rewards for pro-social involvement, and that just means that when they have pro-social involvement in their family rewards, the kids feel like they're part of the family, they're part of the decision-making process, and the data shows that when kids have that feeling, they are less likely to fall into risky behaviors. 33% risk factor moving on, and prevalence rate for family conflict, so anytime there's conflict within the family, we see there's a risk factor that kids are more likely going to become involved in antisocial behaviors and ask and act out. So that's at 33% from 2016. And then, the next two are in family management. Family management, our parents in supervision and discipline, it's parents failing to supervise or failing to give their kids clear expectations, or give them too severe punishment when these expectations aren't met. So these are self-reported, the kids with this information, and you can see that ages 10 to 13, 46% of the kids felt that they fell into that category, and ages 14 to 17, 39% of the kids in the survey showed risks for those factors. Grade level reading and mathematics on the next page, Manatee County 3rd grade students scoring below Level 3, which is a grade level, in the English Language Arts Standard Assessment, you can see that the numbers were fairly steady, that we've been on a slow decline, and then there was a good drop in numbers, which is good for us, down to 47% for the 18-19 data, and I think we've done some good work there, both with the Patterson Foundation doing what they do with the grade level reading, and also as the CSAB, we've put an increased focus on our out-of-school-time programs, so they have an increased focus on reading at grade levels for their kids that they serve who are under 3rd grade, and also an increased academic focus as well, which you can see reflected in the next one, which is the state assessment for the mathematics, which is also kids scoring below grade level, the numbers are dropping a little bit. On the next page, we have kindergarten readiness, and these are kids who scored as kindergarten-ready according to the FLKRS, which is a Florida Kindergarten Readiness Screener, and so kids, that has gone up a little bit, up to 48% for the 18-19 school year. And then Title 1 schools, it's gone from 30 to 36%, so there was a nice jump for Title 1 schools as well. The next set of data is for childhood obesity, for 2-year-olds, and then grades 1, 3, and 6. You can see the percentage of kids in Manatee County who are considered obese according to the BMI. Next page, mental health, this is just Florida data we have for the mental health, 28% of kids ages 14 to 17 felt that they felt sad or hopeless daily for two weeks in a row, and 14.4% of students age 14 to 17 reported they seriously considered suicide within the past two months, and that's from 2017 data. Bullying, Manatee County students 10 to 14 reported being verbally bullied in the past 30-days, 29.6%, and ages 15 to 17 was 21.6%. And there has been an increased focus too, on our out-of-school-time programs, the ones offering the kids that work on more social health and behavior development to try to combat the bullying. Disciplinary referrals in Manatee County, the elementary schools, 44% for bullying and harassment for the last year, which was down from 52% the year before. For secondary students, it was up a little bit, from 48% to 56%. On the next page, we have school suspensions, and these are Manatee County students who received out-of-school suspension. In 1819, high school students, the number was down to 37% from 42% the year before, and I think a good portion of that has been the ATOS program that the School Board has implemented, which is the Alternative Time Out of School program, where if kids are given suspension out of school, they can choose to go to ATOS instead, which is housed at one of two schools here in the county, and they can go and they can stay caught up with their schoolwork, they can have a little behavioral intervention where they talk about what incidents led them to that position, and how they can work on that in the future. Middle school students stayed the same, 28% to 28% from the year before, and there was a small increase in elementary school students from 17-18 to 18-19, from 27 to 31%, and ATOS does not serve elementary school students. And that is all.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. Yes, the next item, getting into the meat of it, Xavier, your priorities.
Okay, so you can find, this is on page, that's 50?
Thank you. Fifty of 65?
Fifty?
Investment goals?
The priorities, the investment goals and priorities, yes. And so I'll be going over our priorities with you for 2021. So the Advisory Board reviews and evaluates comprehensive risk factors and indicator data gathered from a variety of reliable and relevant local, state, and national resources to determine the ongoing and emerging needs of the children and families in our community. At the annual retreat held on October 4, the members considered this data and facts brought forth for their individual areas of expertise to determine results-focused investment goals and priorities for 2021. So the overall desired results, children in foster care gain a permanent, stable, nurturing home within 12 months of entering care and remain there. Children remain in their homes free of abuse and neglect and do not enter foster care. Funders, systems, policies, and practice align to ensure that our children read on grade level by 4th grade. Stable social, behavioral, and emotional well-being for our children. The overall desired results for children in Manatee County are not achievable with an unfocused approach to investment, nor are they attainable with the amount of funds available. To make a difference with the available funds, the Advisory Board set the priorities outlined in this plan for 2021. These are the results-focused investments can be tracked and measured in terms of moving the needle toward a set target of improvement for specific indicators of child well-being. Applications will be reviewed by the Advisory Board in 2020. If you turn the page, or it's the next page, the Fiscal 2021 Priority Result Update. So the first one we have is the children in foster care gain a permanent, stable, and nurturing home within the 12 months of entering care and remain there. So our target is to meet or exceed the following child welfare, state, federal placement stability targets by 2021, 2022. If you go ahead and go down to, let me see here, so 40.5% or higher of children in foster care are exiting to a permanent home within 12 months of entering care. 43.6% or higher of the children exiting to a permanent home within 12 months for those in care from 12 to 23 months. 4.12% or lower placement moves per 1,000-days in foster care. And the present situation right now in Manatee County, for 17-18, we were at 34.4%, that's 168 in 17, 461 in 18. 18-19, 38.56%, 630 in 18, and 1,634 in 19. Now, we're up 2.16%, which is better, but our target is 40.5% or higher, so we're below, but we're making, we're doing good as far as moving it, moving the needle up. Manatee County children in foster care exiting care to a permanent home within 12 to 23 months of entering out-of-home care, so 17-18, we're at 48.7%. 17, we were at 383, 18, we were at 785. In 2018, we were at 54.63%, in 18, we were at 419, which rose to 767. We are up by 5.93%. The target is 43.6%, which we are exceeding this target. Percent of placement moved for 1,000-days for Manatee County children in out-of-home care. In 17-18, we were at 4.53%, in 18-19, we were at 4.27%, and percentage change was .26%, which is better, and the target is 4.12% or lower, so we are exceeding. In Manatee County, year-to-date, 2019, 119 children ages 0-5 exited out of the home care, out of which 181 children 0-5 entering during that same time period. In 2018, 186 children ages 0-5 exited out of home care, with 206 children ages 0-5 entering out of home care, during the same time period. entering out of home care during the same time period. In 2017, one-hundred-and-ninety-four children ages zero to five exited out of home care, with one-hundred-and-seventy-nine children ages zero to five entering out of the home care during that same time period. The next priority is children remain in their home free of abuse and neglect and do not re-enter foster care. The target here is to meet or exceed the following federal child welfare prevention targets by 2021, 2022. Ninety-one-point-seven percent or higher of children who do not re-enter care within twelve months of moving to a permanent home. The present situation in Manatee County right now, seventeen-eighteen, eighty-nine-point-six-three percent. That was eight-hundred-and-thirty in seventeen and nine-hundred-and-twenty-six in eighteen. Eighteen-nineteen, we were at ninety-one-point-nine-one percent. In eighteen, it was seven-hundred-and-sixteen and seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine. The percentage is up by two-point-two-eight percent. The target, ninety-one-point-seven percent or higher above. And we are doing well here. The average number of child abuse investigations year-to-date in 2019 since July was three-hundred-and-twenty-four. The average number of investigations increased slightly in 2018 at three-hundred-and-fifty-two from 2017 at three-hundred-and-forty-eight, which was a slight decline from 2016 at three-hundred-and-fifty-five and 2015 at three-hundred-and-fifty-nine. In 2019, year-to-date, July verified findings, our substance abuse misuse was one-hundred-and-sixty-one, which includes illicit drugs, alcohol prescriptions, substance misuse, and substance-exposed newborns. That was number one. The next one, number two, was household member violence, one-hundred-and-seventeen. And then number three, inadequate supervision, with ninety-one. The next priority, yes, is there a question?
I'm waiting for the, I'm waiting. Are you giving us your priorities?
Mm-hmm.
That's what you're doing today?
Yes.
Because usually in the, historically, we, we all got together and we decided on our priorities and you gave recommendations. And that's what you're doing today, correct?
So we've already had the retreat.
Right.
And this particular time, what we did, Carol, we set priorities a couple of years ago. And as the board, as we met, we were changing the priorities every year.
Right.
So we were coming back to the community and some of those priorities had not changed yet. So what we did was we kept the same priorities that we had. And then if we heard from the community that there was something that we needed to add, we did. So as I go through the priorities today, the ones that were really focused on when I finished through, we were going to talk about, and if you had any questions on, was the behavioral and extremely, for number one for us, was the third-grade level reading. And what we've done, and we set subcommittees to kind of go and talk about that because what we found that we were not looking at like the early learning part of it. So we wanted to make sure that we were not excluding the programs that were actually helping those kids toward that third grade.
I'll wait till the end. I'll wait till the end of the presentation.
I'm almost done. Well, yeah, I'm trying.
No, no, I was just telling the chairman.
Okay. So C was funders, system policies, and practice aligned to ensure that our children read on grade level by fourth grade. And this is just what I was speaking about. To increase percent of Manatee County students able to read on grade level by the fourth grade to seventy percent by 2021, 2022 school year. And again, this was set to, for two years. But what we're finding is a lot of these priorities were not able to give them a year. They might need to be extended because it's an extreme issue that we have in our community. The elementary type, all seventeen-eighteen, they were, it was fifty percent. Eighteen-nineteen is fifty-three percent. And it's up by three percent and it's, it's getting better. But the target for us is seventy percent. Elementary for the Title I schools, seventeen-eighteen was thirty-one percent grade level. Eighteen-nineteen, thirty-three percent grade level. We're up by two percent. But again, it's seventy percent below. If fifty percent of third-grade students are unable to read, then fifty percent of thirteen-thousand-fifty-five students struggle to learn and many will begin to drop out beginning in the fourth grade. Without a quality summer learning program, these students will fall further and further behind. Their failure to succeed in school and negativity affect their entire life. At-risk students who are unable to read by third grade may suffer depression, behavioral programs, drug or alcohol dependency. Their future employment possibilities are limited. We also are focusing with United Way, Manatee Community Foundation. There's many other organizations that are working on this. So we're coming, yes.
Xavier, I was just gonna, gonna say I'm really surprised about the reading because I know that several in this room have really put in a lot of time and effort in trying to help students read. And I know there are some great programs out there. So, you know, it's, it's a little discouraging to see, really, it's only up, if I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, you know, maybe three percent overall. That's very sad. And I know it is a very serious issue. And it's not a new issue. I mean, for my eight years on this board, or almost eight years, you know, it's been an issue every year. So I, my heart goes out to you guys because I know you're working so hard in that regard. So just thought I would mention, from my standpoint, I think that's, it's too low. I want to see it much better than that.
And I know this is probably one of the most, for, for me, I think now is one of the most important priorities that we are tackling. And the difference this year, and what we've been looking at, Vanessa, is that we are merging with these other organizations. And Sheri will tell you, everyone is starting to share information. So as a board, we just don't want to go in and say, well, we're gonna get results here. Well, we're looking at what United Way is doing. We're looking at what the school board is doing, early learning, Manatee Community Foundation. And if we're all trying to buckle together and, you know, tackle the problem, then I think that's better. And I think that's what we're doing different. And I think that we'll see better numbers in the future.
Good, because, you know, they say, I mean, the old saying, it takes a village.
And, and that's exactly, I think, what, what we're doing now.
Yeah, good. Glad to hear that.
The next target is stable, social, behavioral, and emotional well-being for our children. The target is to meet or exceed the following targets to improve the social, behavioral, and emotional well-being of youth by 2021, 2022 school year. Incidence out-of-school suspensions to decrease by twenty percent. Incidence of referrals for aggression, bullying, harassment to decrease by twenty percent. School-level out-of-school suspension among the most commonly recognized methods of addressing conduct infractions in school. Elementary, seventeen-eighteen, twenty-seven percent. Eighteen-nineteen, thirty-one percent. Middle school was twenty-eight and twenty-eight percent. And then high school, seventeen-eighteen, forty-two percent. Eighteen-nineteen, thirty-seven percent. Elementary actually did worse, increased by four percent. The target was seven percent above, but it looks like it went up by four percent. Middle school stayed neutral. The target was eight percent. And high school was better and came down by five percent, which was, we like to see that, but the target is twenty-two percent above. Incidence of discipline referrals for specific infractions. Elementary seventeen-eighteen school year was three-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-three. The secondary was nine-hundred-and-seventeen. The eighteen-nineteen school year was three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight. And the secondary was one-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-one. Again, the percentage change, elementary, it went up and was fifty, fifteen percent. And then secondary went up also thirty-eight percent. So we want to be negative twenty percent for both of those for a target to be below. Referrals for disrespectful, disruptive, and inappropriate behaviors. So we have school level for elementary seventeen-eighteen school year was three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine. Secondary was thirteen-thousand-eighteen students in seventeen-eighteen. Eighteen-nineteen, the school year, was four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fourteen. And secondary was twelve-thousand-nine-hundred-and-three. For elementary, it was worse and it went up to twenty-three percent. The target is negative twenty percent. Secondary is negative one percent and it got a little better, but we still looking for negative twenty percent. This is also one that we moved out. There, there was a lot of discussion in the retreat. As the school board representative, Gina Messenger brought in some numbers that we were looking at. And we were looking at bullying, harassment, disruptive behaviors, inappropriate behaviors. And the numbers were high. So we decided to pull this one out also to discuss what we can do, to see what we can do to tackle those. And that is the actual priorities for, for the year. I think I went over everything. Any questions now for us?
We've got one more from Kristy Hagan.
That's me.
There she is.
All right.
She's hiding back there.
Steve, are we gonna ask questions on this?
Yeah, after this one, well, then it's an open floor.
So we're doing special initiatives next? Is that where you're on next, special initiatives? Okay.
I'm good with that.
Yep, that's what I'm doing.
I don't know, I don't know where it is.
There's no handout for it. I'm just gonna tell you about it, so.
Okay, that's okay.
You'll have to just stare at me.
Gotcha. We're gonna stare at you.
How's this? Okay, so I'm gonna share our, our experience with the shift from outcomes to results. A group of us reported on our shift at the Florida Children's Council Retreat this past summer because we're excited what results portray. The results are understandable and they make it easy to see the benefits that the clients are gaining. Here I have an example of one of our agency's shift and focus from outcomes to results. Just so that you know, this agency serves parents whose children have been removed due to abuse or neglect. So under outcome measures, the funded agency provided that through workshops, parents will increase their knowledge of protective factors and reduce their risk factors. And that was measured by completing twelve hours of instruction and a post-session survey that reports that the parents have learned a minimum of one parenting topic that correlates with protective factors. And that the other one, the other outcome measure was through a home visiting program, parents will build protective factors and diminish risk factors. And that was measured by achieving the goals on their family support plan, along with a post-test that indicated no significant risk factors were present. So just looking at that, neither of the outcomes declare how many clients were anticipated to be served or what the estimated success rate would be. Neither shared the targeted result, but rather, in our opinion, it seems that there are more milestones reaching towards the results. In the outcomes, knowledge is stated to be increased. But just because they know it, does that mean they'll really apply it? And does completing a specific number of hours demonstrate anything except that they complied with their attendance? None of these outcome measures assures that children can safely be returned to their parents. So with this same agency focusing on results first, here's the statement that they declare. Of the eighty high-risk parents we anticipate serving, fifty-six will achieve all their individual behavioral goals in areas which place them out of the risk range for child abuse or neglect and report no new verified instances of parent-related abuse, child abuse or neglect. And then we, we have four milestones for each of them. The first milestone being that parents have demonstrated active engagement and developed goals for the family support plan. And that's verified within eight weeks. The initial assessments and pre-tests are completed and a family support plan was developed with their individualized goals. The second milestone is that parents have demonstrated progress towards meeting the behavioral goals of their family support plan. And this is verified within twelve weeks. The parent educator observed and documented the parents' use of the skills correlated to a reduction of their identified risk factors. Milestone three is that parents have continued to demonstrate progress towards meeting the behavioral goals on their plan in accordance with the timeline on that plan. So within twenty visits, the parent educator observed and documented the parents' consistent and progressive use of the skills correlated to a reduction of their identified risk factors. And milestone four, this one's kind of lengthy. Parents have met the behavioral goals on their family support plan, placing them out of the risk range for child abuse or neglect. And within four weeks of the case closure, there have been no new verified instances of parent-related child abuse or neglect. And that's verified through observation and documentation that the parents effectively and consistently use the skills correlated to the reduction of their identified risk factors, meeting the goals of their family support plan. Parents must also meet post-test risk assessment scoring criteria using one or more standardized pre- and post-tests based on the children's age and presenting risk factors. Parents were also given a survey to document their own behavioral changes as a result of the program. With parents' consent, abuse reports are checked with DCF and SCC. So in the results-first format, the following is defined. The client in need or at risk is determined. The number of clients anticipated to be served is determined along with the number of clients the agency anticipates reaching the result. The intended result for the client participating in the program is clear. And each of the milestones and verifications demonstrate what will be accomplished, why it will be accomplished, and how it is recorded or measured. The executive director of this program has shared some great things about their experience in using results, and I'll share some of what she shared with us. She says, "We love to focus on results first. Now we are tracking behaviors as the strongest indicator of actual long-term human gain. The focus on results versus activities gives us a greater flexibility to change the activities to meet the results. And there is much greater importance placed on the depth of human gain versus the number of people being served." So that's what I have on that shift.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I guess at this point, we'll just open it up. I've got on the board Carol, Betsy, and Mitzi. Oh, I just figured you had to be.
Thank, thank you.
I'll take her place.
Sheri, you've been about from this, this is a different format that's being presented to us today, correct? It looks like you guys have set the, your goals and your priorities as children, the first one is children in foster care to gain a permanent, stable, and nurturing home within twelve months. The second one is children remain in their homes free of abuse and neglect and don't enter a foster care. The next one is funders, system policies, and practice aligned to ensure that our children are ready to grade read at fourth grade. And then the D is stable, social, behavioral, and emotional well-being for our children, correct? Those are the ones that you all said at your retreat, correct?
You passed the test. Those are the four that you have in there.
Well, okay. In the past, has the, and I'm just asking because, again, it's new. In the past, haven't we all gotten together? And from us as commissioners here and in our community and working with you guys together to come up with priorities? And then you would go to your retreat and come up with a plan? Is that what's happened?
Let me forward on what, let me just piggyback on what Xavier said earlier. These are the same goals. I think this is the second year. And the main reason for addressing those four goals And the main reason for addressing those four goals and all the rest of the board members can comment obviously on why they would stick with those is because of the behavioral change that it takes. You heard us talking about percentage up, percentage down. It doesn't by any means mean that other programs aren't being funded and are contributing to these, but these are the items that this group is measuring the results on. Are they working to make progress? And so it was determined last year, or excuse me, two years ago, that these would be the main four that you would focus on and track. And so this is your second year of the information that's provided. And this meeting is to talk about that, but then to hear other concepts that you have as a board and as your advisory board members have because you have a, and a report that's due in December, so it can go out to the community.
In the past, we've had, I mean, all the other programs that we've approved at this last budget, this plan that you're presenting today, is that, what about the programs that don't kind of fit into that? Is that gonna, are they gonna go away? Because we have some programs we approved that I recall that aren't gonna fit in some of these. I support the foster care because if you don't have a stable family, you can't learn fourth grade reading. So totally, I get all that. You know. When I was young, we didn't have stuff like this, unfortunately. But I just, I wanted to make sure, and then results first. I know it's always been outcomes and now it's going to results. This to me seems like to these agencies that come before us that get funding from you guys and us, it's a lot that we're putting on to them for results first versus the other, I don't know. I'm asking, your, the presentation said it was something like it was new. And I know the only one that probably has experience up here that are actually doing it is Reggie from him getting some funds from his organization that he worked at. But I just want to make sure that our kids are being taken care of and I think foster care is number one to me too. Totally, I get it. And the reading, even, and I agree, there's so many people that are doing reading programs now that getting it all together, so there's not a duplication, would be the best bang for our bucks. But again, I was just worried about the agencies that aren't fitting into this, that don't have the expertise to do results first, if it's any harder than what they're doing now. We know a bunch have dropped out. Just wanted to make sure that we're still being able to reach the organizations that can help the kids that maybe not fall under this.
I would allow, I think the advisory board wants to answer that. There's probably many members that want to, but I'll make one, I'll make one comment is that we made the move three years ago from being a funder to being an investor. And funding is required outcomes before, but now when you're talking about investing results, they have selected these four areas because, you know, when you think about the impact across the county to both government services, your court services, all the areas that they represent, these are the most impactful ones. And I'm gonna turn it over to the chair of the advisory board.
It's so, it's like a catch 22 and then we, because sometimes we hear from some of the agencies, the programs that think this results first is great. Because we're not saying it's the amount of kids that you have coming through your door. It's the quality of the program that you're, because if you have a child coming through the door, but you're not doing anything with them and we're not, we don't know what you're doing. So basically, the results first, Carol, with the priorities also, we're not excluding any of the agencies. We have agencies that score higher than our priorities because they're just great programs, but they might not be a priority. These are just programs that you can put, you can check that I'm a priority. The priorities are just saying, this is the, what's going on in Manatee County, this is the issue at the moment and this is what the CSAB has decided to focus on. But like the other agencies, and I always say Hope Family Services, they're not necessar, they're one of our top agencies. You know, they score highly every year, so we're not excluding those agencies at all. And nobody gets picked over the other agency because you're a priority. We're just acknowledging you're a priority. There's no weighted, we're not giving any extra points or anything like that. We're just saying that we're asking our agencies, these are the issues that we have going on right now. And if you can help in some type of way and add this to your program, they do. But I think the results first from being on the board from 2013 helps us. The investment is so much better. And we know what we're doing with the money and we're not just giving an agency money and not having there be any type of accountability for it. And we know our children are getting served.
So everybody will do their application and they can check if there are results first and then that-
Not results first, but everyone is results first. It's the priority.
Priorities, okay. So people like you just mentioned Hope, they may not be doing the results first, but your goal is to-
Everyone does results first.
The priorities then, I'm sorry, the priorities. But they'll still be in the mix, you'll be able to still apply for the monies if they aren't one of the top- That's what I wasn't clear on, thank you.
Absolutely, and the staff, they are working with the agencies and all we're doing is saying, what are you, what are you focusing on? What do you wanna accomplish? And then the staff works with them on the results to ma, and it makes their program even better.
Thank you.
So just, so I can understand, but your priorities to me is like your, your goals, you're up here, you know, and so we're kinda looking at a bigger picture with the goals. That's what we wanna do and then we drill down from there to get to the results first. And just because, but it may be Hope doesn't target third-grade reading level people, they don't get penalized for that. But on the other hand, we want them to understand when they come in that this is the, this is a priority, you know, that in this county, this is the third-grade reading. Is that my saying that right? Okay, just wanna get that clear in my little mind. Betsy.
Yeah, it's a little mind-numbing statistics, right? I mean, but that's what we asked for. We asked for these results first, so. But I just wanna say, I know that all of you are doing this because you have a passion to help children. And I don't think that should be left out when we go through all of these statistics. And it's so hard to move the needle. We get that. You know, these are very important overall desired results. You know, the last one, stable social behavioral and emotional well-being for our children. Well, that's a pretty big ask. And we know, and we've experienced it as commissioners recently, when we heard from so many people in our community that are trying to provide food, I had no idea that there were so many people that just didn't have food in our community. So we heard from all of the folks that are involved in the food pantry business. So we know that as much as we wanna focus on reading, and I have done it, I have sat down and have done it for many years with a child and talked with them and tried to help them read. But you know what? If they're hungry, they're not gonna pay any attention because they can't. So I don't know how we expand on this. Because it's slow to move the needle on these things and we don't wanna lose focus, I get that, I really appreciate that. But I'm concerned about, and I'm just gonna throw them out, three things in this community. Poverty, food insecurity and the stress that is put on our kids because of the impact of social media. That stress, I think, results in bullying. You know, obviously not so much little kids. There was just a story recently that little kids, little bitty kids are having something they call screen anxiety. You know, it's something that I don't know if we can do anything about. Maybe research it a little bit, find out more, get information out to parents. But, you know, I know that this is what the charge you were given is to come back with results first. And it's amazing amount of statistics that you've done that. But I don't wanna lose sight of the big picture. That's my concern. So I'd be, love to hear from all of you, you guys are in the trenches. We're up here trying to deal with policy on a big issue, but you guys are eyes, ears, feet on the ground. So if there's anything you wanna share with me, I'd love to hear it.
Okay, Vanessa?
I'm probably gonna hit this from an opposite direction. I think the things that you've presented today are very important. I mean, if you, especially what hit me the most was looking at elementary students. You know, we know that we were the epicenter for the opioid epidemic. We still have effects from that. And under assumptions, it says right here, commissioners, witnessing domestic violence, being targets of abuse, homelessness, a parent with substance abuse or mental health issues. I mean, that's just a few. And then you add, as Betsy said, social media, which I don't know that we can do anything about that. But I admire and I respect the fact that you have priorities, that you realize you're not gonna get results in year one or year two. This is a never-ending situation. It is something that's gonna have to be tackled every year to improve. And I think in some ways, you know, we see results. In some ways, we still have a ways to go. But the bottom line is, we have to continue to press forward on the issues of trying to help especially our elementary students. I was very, very sad to see, you know, where we're at today with that. I think it's sad to know that in Manatee County, we have this issue. And looking at secondary and middle and high, it's a little better. You know, so we are making some leadway. And you have, you need to realize that some of the leadway, that the improvements that we're seeing is because of the programs that you guys come up with that you wanna fund. You need to take a bow, in my opinion. I think we've seen improvement. I think we still have a ways to go. It's not going to, you know, we're not gonna be able every year to go, okay, we had those priorities so last year. So now we're gonna go and we're gonna change. We're gonna go with these priorities this week or this year. That's not feasible, really. I mean, it's not how it's done. You might find something that we're maybe on one of your priorities you need to add to, as I think, Extavia, you said. You know, I gotta tell you, I got a little grandson in Texas. He's in elementary school. And I sit here and I looked at some of these things and I think about him because he's having some of the same issues. Now, his parents, very successful. He's got great sisters. You know, some of the issues that we see here is not him. But what I'm saying is, it seems to be something that we're seeing particularly in elementary school. So I think we need to take a deep breath. I think you guys have your thumb on what the issues are, what needs to be done and we, you're the advisory board. We're here to listen to you. You're out there in the trenches, we're not. So I appreciate what you've brought forward. I appreciate the results that you're showing us here. And I think we just need to keep pushing and pushing and pushing. Because one thing we do know for sure, these kids are our future of Manatee County. And we need, that is number one priority. We have to make sure that we do everything we possibly can to give them the best chance to be successful as they grow. So, good job, I think, overall to all of you. And I appreciate all you do. It's not an easy task. Thank you.
Reggie?
Can you hear me? I do wanna make sure that I tell the CSAB advisory board, thank you for everything that you all do. The trench work is very difficult. The trench work is very difficult. And I will just put a little bit of my history in there as far as being a teacher, being a teacher, being a graduation coach. And my last three or four years in the school system, I was a dean, all right? And I dealt with harassing, bullying and some of the issues that are facing our youth as we go to school. But just to discuss real quickly what Betsy was saying about the nutrition, we just need to make sure that it's clear that Feeding Tampa Bay is striving to get into the schools to support with those nutritional concerns that we're having. And within a phone conversation that I had with them, seven out of the 10 schools in my district that are struggling with that third-grade reading, I'm trying to convince them to make sure that they get into those schools with that nutrition. But here's what I'm thinking as far as the reading. The collaborations are going to be very, very important as far as with the United Way and other entities that are really trying to, you know, make that impact on that third-grade reading level. But what are we doing? And what I mean by what are we doing? Every entity, every entity has its own stride and has its own steps that they feel like, well, this is what I'm going to do to make a difference. Are we discussing success stories? Are we identifying what incentives that are impacting the youth? And so we can say, well, it's working over here in Somerset, but have we tried it in Palmetto or in Robonia? So we can move the needle a little bit more. And I'm not necessarily sure what everybody's doing. I do know that, you know, I need to make sure I'm not all speaking when I'm speaking about the Palmetto Center. But I do know we have a reading program. Do know we have a reading program. And we wanna collaborate with as many of the elementary and schools as we possibly can. And this is back to my question as far as what are we doing? Software and accessibility for the after-school programs and things like that. And how do we make that connectivity? Because I said this to the superintendent. You're dealing with one student when you're trying to move, move the needle. But if a youth agency have a software and it's not the same software that the school system is using, now our youth are bouncing around. And sometimes iReady is what's currently out there, what we're using right now, even to identify where the students are within iReady at that particular point in time. Now, we can easily say that the student has access, right? And they know where they are. There's an opportunity there for us to identify what everybody's doing and to support that student a little stronger. Sometimes students don't remember where they are. And sometimes to hear from the teachers to the youth agencies or whatever entities that are attempting to support and make sure we move the needle, we need to open up those lines of communication. I'll be the first one to say, I don't know how that's done. But also be the first one to say that I'm willing to come to the table to see how it's done. And I think it's very, very important for us to do that. Sometimes our youth are confused. If we're taking them through multiple softwares and different people are trying to teach the same concept different ways and we wonder why a student becomes frustrated. If you give it some thought, I think as an adult, and if we really want to move the needle, we have to see what's being done. And if we're gonna lead, we have to direct and say, this is what's working. This is what needs to be done. Now, I do know from the CSAB and from the county commissioners, we're not the school district. We're not the school district and I'm not trying to speak yea or nay in that area. I'm trying to say, as community leaders, if we want to move the needle, we have to really come to the table and look at some of the true issues that our youth are dealing with. And I often see kids being bounced around and they're frustrated. They really want to learn, but what are they dealing with at home? I mean, within some of my experiences from the school system, a kid walked to school in the rain because it was their third party, they sent them home. And that's not, that's not a shot at the school system. I'm saying if we're going to take and deal with this, we need to know what we're doing based on what needs to be done. The summer gains and assessments, whatever success stories that are out there, we need to know. Whatever incentives that are out there, so we can make sure all youth are having positive experiences. How do we improve the trench work priorities? How do we do it? And to talk about the bullying and the harassing, and this is my area, this is why I'm, I normally don't talk that much. But this is, this is my area. When we're talking about the bullying and the harassing and the social behavior, within our priorities, very rarely are we talking about a mentoring program, male and female. Because you know what? In order for, to get the youth focused, they have to see individuals that they wanna be like. Because if we don't show them the right type of individuals, the streets will. And that's what I, that's what we're really combating. It's Facebook, social media and things like that. But we're really, we're really combating, you know, from an area of, are we really looking at what needs to be done within the social and the behavior? The behavior comes from frustration. And the kid's not necessarily knowing how to learn. And they understand that their peer is reading, but truthfully, internally, they understand that they don't understand what's being read, what they're trying to read. So the behavior, now they act out. But the teachers, right, are taught to teach bell-to-bell and to stay on task. From the county perspective or from the CSAB, what are we doing, I mean, to mentor a kid? To say, yes, we're gonna have this tough moment, but we want you to stay on task and we wanna encourage you and we wanna support you in your difficult moments. I'm not necessarily sure we're doing that. And I may be wrong, if I am, I'll be the first one. But I do know a mentoring program from a female standpoint will benefit a lot of things. I know a mentoring program from a male standpoint will benefit a lot of things. We're, I'm excited about being in a book club with Misty. about being in a book club with Misty. But are we, are we bringing book clubs, book circles, shall I say, as far as an opportunity enhanced the reading and things like that? I'm gonna do that. But I'm just saying, we have to be a little bit more innovative. And we have to really look at what the youth are really going for, if we're going through, if we're gonna move the needle. That's just, that's just me.
Okay, Misty.
She wants to speak now.
We're gonna, we're gonna get the ground rules done again here. We've gotten through the first round of the commissioners, Carol. So after that, I'd like to open it up for some of the advisory people, if they have questions or would like to respond to some of this stuff. So.
Yeah, I won't be long. Thank you very much. I, I thank you, Reggie, for your comments. They were excellent. A mentoring program is something that could be so beneficial if it were expanded to help all of our students. But we just don't have the resources, right? So we have these little mentoring programs. Betsy and I have done one. You know, we've done many of them. There's all these little groups that do it. But we're just not touching enough children, unfortunately. I, I'm reminded of the story that Dr. Green used to tell, and maybe some of you have heard it, about the little boy who was a problem in the classroom. And he was distracting other kids, and he couldn't sit still. And he, four-letter words were coming out of his mouth like a waterfall. And he was just one of those behavior issues that really took a lot of energy from a lot of people, including Dr. Green, who took him to and from his home and different things. And until she learned one day that he had such dental problems in his mouth, that he was in so much pain, that that's how this little kid was processing his pain. And that's why he was such a problem, right? So unfortunately, our schools have so many issues to deal with that have nothing to do with teaching our kids. It's, it's the lack of food, and the lack of housing, the lack of healthcare, and all of these things that are a big speed bump to educating our kids. And I wish, if I were the king, I wish that we could focus on character development, and focus on teaching our children about kindness and empathy. Because once you get those things understood, it's, it's easier to teach them about the other things, like reading. But that's a bigger problem. That's a state problem, and maybe even a national problem. So I'm not suggesting that we can change that. But whatever we can do to bring more mentoring programs into the community, and to help address these basic needs for our kids, I think is helpful.
Thank you. Anybody else, any, from the advisory board, like to respond to any of the, or have any dialogue, or, you know? Oh, who's down? Gina? Or? Oh, Debbie. Okay.
My hand was not up, but I'll take off. Put a politician in front of a microphone. I'll address a few different things. First of all, we have 50,000 students this year. 50,000 students. So think about how hard that needle is to move when we have 50,000 kids. Talking about character development, I heard that mentioned. One of the great things that a lot of the programs that the school district has added, in a lot of the different curriculums, is a lot of different character development. Not just character development, but college readiness and other types of things, starting even in our elementary schools, in our more impoverished areas. So I think as those programs grow and expand to more schools, which is the, from my understanding, part of the plan from the superintendent, I think that those things will continue to improve. Ms. Corrie.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong. But there was some conversation about all the parties kind of discussing and talking to each other. And my understanding is that you are part of a group with United Way and Grade Level Reading Campaign and the school district. And I think that the school district has become far more communicative.
Yes.
With all the parties involved. And perhaps what I'm hearing is, some of the smaller groups need to maybe join in that conversation even more. But from my understanding, from this year, perhaps even starting last year, with our new superintendent, the walls have been, the doors have been opened, the walls, I think, are coming down. And there's been a lot more communication, so that everybody is working together, so there isn't duplication of services. Everybody is moving forward and marching forward in the same way, so that we can all reach the goal. For me, the number one goal is our kids' reading. Hands down, that's my number one goal. And, but you can't get there without everything else that we've talked about. And, you know, to work in Title I schools, that, that's all I saw. You'd have a kid that was hungry. Well, he's not gonna care about reading today because he's hungry. So, you know, you gotta feed the kids first. So, you know, there's a lot of those issues. Now, I'm not gonna remember what it is. Oh, mentoring. I heard a lot of talk about mentoring. And I could be wrong, so maybe someone from the CSAB can correct me. But there was a mentoring program that came before us this year. And granted, this mentoring program lasted over several years. But they were not permitted to apply, or really were denied, because it didn't fit into, from my understanding, did not somehow fit into how data is collected. And so, you know, that's where we run into that really, I, I wholeheartedly believe mentoring is a great way, because those children that grow up with parents that are on drugs, or homeless, or whatever, they need to see models of, no, this is how it can be for you. You, you can, you, you know, they need that. But I'm not sure that the way things are written now, I'm not sure that that can be done. I don't know. That, that's something that, you know, because of the way data is tracked year over year, but this is only tracked within one year. I think that's what makes that more difficult. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I'd address everything.
Well, I just say, I don't think there's ever been anyone that's been denied to be able to apply. I think.
Take stock in children.
Pardon me?
It was take stock in children, which you cannot fund.
Explain, take stock in children.
Take stock, take stock, take stock in children.
Right.
Is a mentoring program. But unfortunately, we cannot fund the scholarships. And that's what the application, because once we get in the application, it might be a great mentoring program. But when we go in and see what they're asking to fund, the ordinance might not allow us to fund it. So that's what we weed out before it comes to you all.
Yeah. The requirements of the ordinance have an age requirement, and have other, you know, abuse and neglect, abandoned, at-risk behavior. So there could.
Money has to be used in that year.
Yeah.
Right.
It was a longer term.
Right.
Yeah.
And I think that that's what's so tough about that. To me, a mentoring program is not a one-year thing. That is a multi-year thing. That could expand, and that makes it more difficult to perhaps find.
Well, that is true. But in the, in the instance of take, take stock for children, if it's a scholarship for higher-level education, it puts them beyond the eligible age group. So we're not allowed by the ordinance to put monies in those categories. So at that point, I think it was what they asked for. It was the scholarship portion. If it was mentoring, and if it was for students within the categories, it might have been something that could have been considered. Isn't that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Debbie, I think you had. Could you get the mic a little closer?
Gina addressed it, too. The United Way has been, over the last five or six years, has been focusing more and more on grade-level reading. And in the last year, we've, particularly, there's 10 schools in the central corridor that are always behind. So we are beginning to focus on that. And through the campaign, through grade-level reading, which is a, has a leadership committee of county, early learning, school board, school administration, and United Way, we're beginning to bring together the community on this. So there are beginning steps. And certainly, United Way would welcome anyone who wants to come to the table and discuss this. We're calling it the Big Plan. And it really is a, a plan for everybody. It's not just the United Way's plan. So it, we all have to own these issues, and all, you know, move forward together to accomplish anything. So.
So I just want to piggyback, and what I was saying by coming together, I'm talking about success stories, and practices that are actually taking place, and where the impact is going on with the youth. So hopefully, that can spread. I'm already at the table, by the way. You already. I'm already at the table. But I, I think if things are being done, and, and youth, and we're even moving the needle, what are those practices? What, what are, what are those practices? What can we do to spread it county-wide, so we can make sure that that impact is taking, is taking place?
And what, some of what we're finding is, it's different in each school.
It is.
What each principal and school personnel are wanting, what the kids are needing, what works within their system, it's different from, for each school. So we do have to be a little flexible. And, and there is room for, you know, what's working here, try it here, tweak it a little bit, and maybe it'll work. So we're moving in that direction. And I hope county commissioners will, will, when you're out in the community, keep the pressure on everybody in the community to own the issues that, that we have.
Carol?
No, I, I kind of just wanted to hear from all the board members. I mean, they put so much work into it. I know everybody's shy, but I'm sure you're not shy at your meeting.
Yeah. Microphone, and state your name for the record.
It's Gail Nguyen. And I'm the, a child advocate on the board. So I come from a slightly different perspective. I'm also new on the board. This is my, I've just completed my first year. And so I've had an opportunity to watch a, a lot of things unfold that perhaps you all have not had an opportunity to see. And that is, a lot of people in the communities who have a passion, who have a desire, who conceptualize a solution, and want to implement a non-for-profit. And get to hear what their ideas and what their plans are, whether they're productive and whether they're worthwhile. From my viewpoint, we don't conceptualize what the not-for-profit direction is. We evaluate. And we've tried to normalize, and understand that we're evaluating with the same ruler, one over the next, over the next. It is not a perfect world out there. And we are not going to be able to solve everything that's going on. But if we can do it in a consistent and logical fashion, supporting the goals that we all share together as tax-paying members of this community, which is to get our kids where they need to be, whether it's social media, bullying, or whatever. So in the year that I've been here, I've seen, how many applications do we have? 56? 30? See, it was bigger in my mind. Okay. I was probably staying up late, rereading. Oh, 53. I thought she was telling me three. I have seen a lot of wonderful things, and a lot of passion, and a lot of ideas. And then we take that and try to go make sense of how we allocate money to that. The other thing that I've seen is that moving from outcomes, which I wasn't a part of, but I've seen sort of the transition to results first, which is something I'm used to, coming from the corporate world, I've seen a lot of attention by the staff assisting these people on trying to understand how to move from outcomes to results first. And a lot of, eventually, good news, because we captured, we surfaced things that were not good, that had been funded. So I guess the point I want to make is, I don't think we're gonna solve every problem across the board. And everybody's got a passion. What, what we do, from my viewpoint, is take the people that are out there with these initiatives, ideas, expertise, and try to make evaluations based on a priority that was set here, and give it a ruler that says, we're as fair to this one as we are to this one, and give them assistance to try to help transition in that direction. So I would encourage you to come to some of our meetings, and sit in, and hear sometimes what, how we go back and forth. You know, we have passions, we have desires, we have grandchildren and children. So it, and then hear the people that come forward, and what their ideas are, and what they do. Hopefully, that would bring you a greater sense of comfort that we're doing what I see as an amazing job, with a big issue, and trying to get some consistency, and some integrity, and some focus towards the problems in the community. And I may be off the board tomorrow, so.
No. Very well, we're very well spoken, I thought. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kim Kutch with the Department of Children and Families. And first, I just want to thank you all for putting funding equity for our community-based care on your legislative platform, because that's so extremely important for our children in this community. The Save Children's Coalition is $3.5 million in projected deficit for this year. And really, they need about $5 million to, you know, be even for everything. And just, when they do go to the risk pool, they are very impressed by Manatee County and the services that you all have approved and put into the, the community-based care project for foster care, because it does take a community to work on these issues. And other communities aren't so fortunate to have a CSAB or a county government that's willing to invest time and money into the community-based care project, because they feel it's a state issue, not a community issue. And we also, even though we've been seeing a trend, we're down in our children coming into out-of-home care, we're now starting to see an uptick again the past three months, with more children being sheltered, coming into care, and more parents, once again, overdosing on opioids when it started going down.
Betsy?
Yeah. And I, I mean, I look at this session, like Carol said, where we share what, what we see, because, you know, we're, we're all busy folks, right? We know you're busy folks. So we try to share what we see in the community, and what we see as being some of the needs. That's right. I mean, we're supposed to do the goals. And certainly, you know, we're not talking about shifting those goals, given that we're making incremental progress. That's all we can do, right? That's all we can do is make incremental progress. But there are some things that I just want to respond to that I'd heard. One was about the mentoring program. I can tell you that I have been a Kiwanian, Bradenton Kiwanis Club, since 1993. And one of our focuses has always been to do mentoring. We had a mentoring program that we operated, and Misty actually served on that, because it wasn't just Kiwanians. I got a lot of the women that I worked with, when I was in the private sector. I had 10 women from my company, and Misty volunteered as well. And we would go into Dock Creek Elementary School every week and meet with a group of girls. It was set up through Big Brothers, Big Sisters. It was called the Gals Program. It was through Kiwanis. And we did that pretty successfully, until we were told by the school board that we could no longer do that. The, the girls could not afford the time because of the testing. They were not meeting the goals of the testing. Now, that was probably maybe four or five years, well, I don't.
Longer.
Yeah, you're right. I never know time, pretty bad with time. The county commissioner will do that to you. So yeah, more than eight years ago, because I've been a commissioner for eight years. And so, you know, it's interesting to talk about mentoring, you know, things circle around, you know? Yeah, that's great. But do the schools, are they gonna allow us to do that? Are they gonna allow us to be, take that time? And it, we, you know, we didn't have a focused approach, like grade-level reading, because I've done that ever since that has come about as well. But it's, you know, we need better partnerships between the schools, between our community. And I can tell you, being in Kiwanis, I also learned about another initiative. It's a public-private initiative. And that is the Community School at Manatee Elementary. When I first heard this program, I initially thought, oh, my gosh, how can the school board take that on? You know, they're, they're having a hard enough time, just, you know, trying to get kids to read. How can they take on this huge issue? But Conrad Zemansky, who is from Bell's, previous Bell's corporate, is leading this up, working with the principal. Do you guys know, you guys know about this? I mean, it's an amazing program. And again, you know, maybe we need to talk about success stories more. I get the results first. Like I said, it can be very daunting and very concerning to see that we're not moving the needle. We're gonna have to do some things We're going to have to do some things differently. And I think we need to learn about what other places are doing. Do you talk about that? I know we do. You know, what, what are other communities? You know, we're not in this alone. Government doesn't invent the wheel, we all know that. So, hopefully, we can talk about way, other things that are going on. So, those are just some comments I had on being, oh, and I know I have one other one and I was going to ask this during this work session. So, we heard there's some legislation pending. Wingate, Wingate Newton was talking about some legislation to restrict children's services taxes. Apparently, there's problems in other areas. Have you all heard about this one? Okay. Have, have we heard about this? Do we know what it's all about?
It's, I, I haven't seen the formal writings of it, but this is not new. This is not new. If you can imagine a big county having a heck of a lot of money and it not being the county, so excuse me. So, if it's a, and in a, a dependent council that has like a Pinellas or Hillsborough County, they have, what, Susan, hundreds of thousands, hundreds of millions of dollars that go to them through the county. We're different. It comes in under your ad valorem. It's one-third of a mill, there's no sunset date. The reason why all these guidelines and these people have to abide by them is, you heard, I think, Estavia or Susan say it only passed by 1% way back in the nineties. So, there are a lot of restrictions on the ordinance and things that are required. So, children's services councils are set up differently as grouped, kind of. But ours is a little different because it's under county government. We have a cap on administrative fees, it's 7%. Am I right about that? No more than 7%. There's these requirements to have reports. So, I think part of it is that from time to time, it appears that there's an awful lot of money going out of counties' advolurums to other organizations to extend the money. And so, there's been times over the years in these past thirty years where there's been efforts to try to curtail those kinds of things and bring them back in.
But it wouldn't affect us?
Does, this doesn't affect us.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, I'm gonna finish it all.
Well, before you finish, Dr. Van Buren, who's a pediatrician, that probably sees more of all this than any of us up here. I, and I, I would just like to know your comments if you, of course, you're on the board. Do you feel, in your, especially in your profession, do you feel that we're on the right track with the recommended four options? Come on, you could do it.
Put him on the spot.
He can talk. He's not afraid.
George Van Buren, for the record. I'm a part of the board. We sat and talked about the priorities. We voted on the priorities with input from, you know, board of county commissioners. And so, I'm in line with what we're trying to do. Now, I've sat here and listened to everybody talk about all kinds of different things. And there are a lot of different priorities that we could look at. However, we only got to pick a few. If everything is a priority, nothing's a priority. So, we picked four. We got to roll with those. It's like a strategic plan. And you guys are good at strategic planning, right? So, you got to give it a three, four, or five-year look to see if you can actually make an impact while at the same time looking down the road to see what other things you can do. Someone mentioned to me about a twenty-year look at, of all things, waste management. And you got to really, yeah, kind of look at this as a long-term project because we're invested in the lives of our kids. And so, it's a twenty-year project, even though it says eighteen in the ordinance. So, we got to look at things kind of like stepwise. So, again, all those things you guys have talked about around the table, they are priorities to us. And if we had unlimited monies, we would be able to kind of fund them. But, yeah, we have a finite amount of dollars to do what we can. And so, we do what we can with what we got. And we hope that we're good stewards of the money that you give us through the taxes. And we hope the citizens see that, okay? There are other things we could look at. My big thing is dental, as someone mentioned, okay? You know, kids and dental, adults and dental. Obviously, the opioid issues is a concern. And also, foster care. I mean, there's all kinds of things, but you only got to pick three or four. And we kind of look at those and we focus on those and we do what we can. And then we try to do it again without leaving anybody behind. I don't know if I answered your question, probably talked too much.
Oh, no, that's, that's good, Dr. Van Buren. There was a fluoride program that Patterson Foundation was going to bring to Manatee County. And did they ever approach the, you guys about it for dental, Estavia or anybody? Sherry, you knew about it?
Yeah, there are some things being done. I don't believe Patterson is involved now. I think the Rural Health worked out a program, I think. Unless I'm wrong about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sandra Stone wants to talk first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Hi, Sandra Stone. I just had a couple of, of things. And one, I wanted to just say to Commissioner Bellamy, thank you for speaking about trying to align some of these programs because as, as you were speaking, I was really thinking about some of the applications that we reviewed. And I think you're really correct that there's a lot of different software programs and people are trying to do out-of-school programs to help kids succeed in school, but they're using different tools than what the kids really need when they go to school. So, I hadn't really thought about that before. That was really helpful to think about. And I think, and also different methods because they, when they talk about how they do their programs, they do have very different approaches sometimes and different methods. And I think it probably could get very confusing for kids. We may not be helping as much as we think we're helping sometimes. And maybe we can try to take that into account when we're looking at, or talking with some of these programs to give them some feedback to see if they are trying to align with the school systems. I think that's an excellent point. And also, just wanted to say, one of, one of the sets of statistics that isn't showing up here are even younger kids. And, and I think that we're on target really focusing and continuing to focus on the child abuse and neglect prevention piece or healthy families because what we're seeing is more disruptive behavior from preschool kids, not even elementary. I know we've talked about how the elementary school kids are disturbing, but it's showing up more and more in, in very young kids. I know I'm, I'm a part of the Drug Endangered Children Task Force with Drug Free Manatee and some of the daycare providers have come to our meetings and talked about their concern about the behaviors that they're seeing in very young children. So, I think incorporating more trauma-sensitive care into these programs would be very helpful for us too because if we don't catch them early on, we just catch them later at a different point.
So, I wrote down everything, some of the ideas. And then touch bases really quick on what Reggie said about mentoring and the success stories. Maybe that's something we can do as a board. I know you all asked us to, if we don't recommend a program, to put why. We're not recommended, so it helps you understand. But maybe we can send in some success stories because we have a lot. And it's things that you all might not know that we can just kind of send over, especially for the areas where you have concerns. And like, we, the agencies have mentoring programs within themselves. So, we're already funding a lot of mentoring programs. Maybe we just need to make sure that you all hear some of the success stories. And Big Brothers, Big Sisters is one that we do fund two programs. The one-on-one mentoring and then their juvenile justice. And then Boys and Girls Club, I think the Metal Youth Center has a mentoring program. So, it's the, it's the programs within their programs that we're funding. I know with the food, this is one that I think about all the time because I was a homeless elementary student living in my car and nobody know, knew that I had nowhere to stay. So, I always think about that, but I also get told all the time, we can't do anything for the schools. We can't fund inside the schools. So, how do we help our children who are not eating? How do we help our children that are homeless? And that's something to think about, Betsy, because do we put out a RFP to see what else we can do? I know we have the Salvation Army. It's certain things what we can only fund the children's part of it. So, it's like, as a board, it's good to hear you all with your feedback because then we can go back and say, okay, well, maybe there is an agency already doing that and we don't know and we're not funding them because they haven't decided to apply for it. So, care to development, a lot of those, this is things that I think we need to kind of point out to you all. And if we're not doing enough of it, maybe we should, you know, like Dr. Stone said, give feedback to the agencies that this is some of the things that we want you all to do. And if you want to add it, maybe we can, you know, subsidize some more money to be able to help you fund your particular programs.
Success stories are always good.
Yeah, thank you. I should know them.
Reggie?
Reggie.
Can I just add, maybe we need, is it Tom Mance for Feeding Tampa Bay?
Mance.
Yes, maybe myself or we can do this together, Estavia, reach out to Tom Mance because they're striving to do some nutritional support in, inside the, inside the schools. So, I'm not necessarily sure how it looks, but it may not necessarily be a funding request than it is where it's an opportunity for resources to come together and make an impact in an area where we know that it's needed. They're willing to provide it, but we can bridge that gap with that connectivity. And we just need to make sure we see how that look and, you know, reach out to him and see what they're doing and say, well, we know these needs are at these particular schools, whatever they may be. I'm not necessarily, whatever the schools are, I'm not necessarily sure, but we can research and find that information. I think that's a start for the nutritional stand.
Betsy?
I mean, I, I sit on the charitable committee where the Kiwanis Club is giving out grants, right? So, we're like you, we have to evaluate these grant applications. And I can tell you that one of them is from St. Joseph Church because they provide 2,000 meals during the summer to kids. I know my church does pack-a-sack where we pack meals that go home over the weekend because even though kids are getting food in the schools, they're not getting it over the weekend. And I've heard what happens is the entire family lives off of these, you know, these, you know? Food packs. So, it is a big issue. Again, I know this much about it just because of what I've seen. But, yeah, the schools have a program with the USDA, they provide funding. I mean, I don't know. You, our school board lady probably, Ms. Gina probably knows that much better than I do. But, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a bigger issue than just what they get fed during the school day. So, I want to say that.
Because at this point, we'll open it up to public comment. If there's anybody from the public that would like to come down. There's the podiums here, you have three minutes. Anybody? Nobody? In that case, I guess we'll close public comment. You have anything to say? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
With this group, you had to be more aggressive. You had to hoot and holler.
Just on the food insecurity piece, I had mentioned this to Sherry and Susan, I think it was back in February. But the Department of Children and Families will be closing their office in Manatee County June of next year.
Really?
Yeah, we are, it's for a variety of reasons that we can discuss, but we're willing to be a partner with anything that you want to do or, or looking at to see if someone wants to partner with us for those people that may be eligible for food stamps.
I have a question. I had met, I thought your highest rate of kids being taken out of homes was Manatee County.
It is.
Well, then, why are we taking the office away?
Manatee, DCF does not do child abuse investigations in Manatee County. We haven't since 1999, I believe. Manatee County Sheriff's Office does that.
I know, I was just thinking there was, they could always go there though, the families, no?
They can go there to apply for food stamps, that's it.
Oh, okay.
Food stamps Medicaid.
But it's really depressing. Manatee County is the number one with kids being taken out. I remember when I met with you last year, it was like 350 a month? Am I right? I can't remember.
Yeah, it's high, and it's going up. I think we just did, it's not that money a month.
It was 150 a month.
I think the highest was 100, around 110.
Yeah, it's just a lot, a month, taking out their homes.
Misty?
Yeah, and just one more comment on the food insecurity. And Estavia knows this too. Our charter schools have already, they have already decided that that's a big issue. And every weekend, I know Team Success and Visible Men, they send their kids home, these charter schools, with a couple of bags of groceries so that they can make it through the weekend. So, I mean, maybe we should take a tip from these charter schools and find a way to help the other students in the same way.
Good idea. Anybody else? Okay. Oh, sorry.
So, I'm one of those people who work in the trenches. And my position right now has me working with families in Economic Stability and Employment Services. So, how to make and spend money responsibly. And we do everything from resumes and education to literally sitting down and teaching them how to grocery shop, how to double up responsibly so that everybody still has a, a place and children and adults are all safe and sane. And we talk about food insecurity and it's not necessarily that they're not receiving the food stamps, it's that they're having to sell them to pay for the housing and pay for the childcare so that they can keep going to work to pay for the housing and pay for the childcare. So, these kids, so when they come to me and I said, you're getting $600 a month in food, why are you all hungry? And then I find out it's because they're paying $1,200 a month for a one-bedroom for rent. And they confide in me that they're selling their food stamps. And so, we take them to our food pantry. I give them the Tampa Bay food pantry information. I think that we look at food insecurities that maybe we need to acknowledge that it's not just a food insecurity, it's a housing crisis, it's a childcare crisis, it's a child support crisis. It's so much bigger than a food insecurity issue.
Okay. One more time here. Anybody else? I don't see anybody. But we're going to be adjourned. Thank you all for coming and we'll look forward to getting together again soon. Keep up the good work, doing a great job. Okay, we're going to reopen the meeting for Ms. Whitmore?
No, I just want to know what's our plan after we just finished this meeting. Is, do we vote on this on the next budget? Is this a formal vote that we take like we've done every year?
There's an annual plan due by your ordinance in December and the advertisement and announcement of the funds goes out in January. There's a process and yes, your staff will be bringing that back to you in the December timeframe for you to review and consider and vote on.
So, our December 10th meeting, I think it's our.
Yes, that's the only, that's the only meeting we have.
I gotta leave, I already know about it. Right. Well, well, she, she can bring it up and you can just chair the meeting. How's that? Okay. Discussing strategies. Since we reopened it, I guess we have to reopen it up for public comment. Anybody from the public?
Sherry.
Seeing nobody, we will close public comment. And at this point, we will adjourn this meeting.
Wait, stop.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, Sherry. Sherry, we're not adjourned. I know. I'm leaving anyway, I got to run, I got an appointment.
The meeting, just so everyone understands, this workshop that we were discussing, this topic, is done. But we have another item that was an add-on to the agenda. It doesn't affect the children's services, it's in regard to something else. If you all want to leave, you can. If you all want to listen to our next discussion item, feel free. But we're going to go ahead and turn it over to Sherry Corrie before we close this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This was related to stormwater, so I'm not sure that the Children's Services Advisory Board wants to stay. So, you will not be hurting my feelings if you are departing. Commissioners, as you know, we've completed six public work sessions to provide education on the current stormwater program and to propose an enhanced stormwater program that would include a new dedicated stormwater fee. And at your September 24th regular board meeting, we asked you to allow staff to take the concept of the stormwater fee with enhanced services to a public information campaign. And you agreed. Three public community meetings have been held at local libraries. We've informed businesses and various other environmental groups. We've responded to countless stormwater fee inquiries. We've provided well-thought-out marketing and resource handouts. We've done a lot of FAQs. We've created an online property calculator, done social media posts and a detailed website for the public. for the public. We've been listening to the public, and many of the outstanding questions that they've brought up pertain to things such as, how will the agricultural lands be handled? Can incentives for homeowners associations and community development districts that pay a fee for their private areas be given an incentive? Are you calling this a fee instead of a tax, or is it a fee? How many, how was my ERU calculated? What is the list of projects you'll be completing, including if you provide option two, which is the enhanced fee? And what's the timing on this? So those are a lot of the questions that we've been given at the three meetings. These are all good questions. We were scheduled to return to the board on December 10th at your regular meeting to make decisions. However, we feel we've heard enough issues that seem to be in a common theme, and we're concerned that the residents who see little flooding don't understand our responsibility as a county to accept, treat, handle, and dispose of stormwater per many regulations. Also, that those that are repeatedly impacted by flooding, those that are, have had losses and are really looking for some immediate improvements. And then also, it occurred as we started hearing these questions, that entities such as the schools, our universities, the airport, other businesses who will not be exempt need more time to prepare for this type of a stormwater fee within their budgets. So because of these concerns, we plan to cancel the remaining five public meetings and take steps towards a more detailed report. It should be noted, though, that many of the folks that attended our meetings, quite a few, have written to your emails. They've expressed support for a stormwater fee, and they see the impacts to areas in their neighborhoods, and some have been severely impacted financially by heavy rains and flooding. We want them to know we haven't forgotten these families. In fact, the two recently completed studies, the Pier Strain and Bowley's Creek Study, offered helpful insight into the problems of these areas. We plan to evaluate the possibility of proceeding with some smaller best-practice solutions for those hotspots that we are determined throughout the community. So as we determine the ability to handle those, we would like to bring them back to the board for consideration within the year, if that's possible. Also, I wanted to, I want, I don't want to disregard the tremendous work of staff and the consultants. They've done everything we've asked of them. They're the boots on the ground, and they know how excessive rain and flooding damage the very infrastructure we work to create and maintain and the precious water quality we protect. I want to assure all of them that I'm aware of their needs and plan to come back to the board when we've identified these one-time issues that could potentially be addressed this year. So in closing, we will prepare a public announcement to share with all the media outlets, canceling the remaining five public meetings planned for the remainder of this month. By February of 2020, so just this upcoming February, we'll bring back to the board our recommendations for some of these immediate steps to address the most severely impacted areas and to ensure what we're doing will help to avoid some flooding but add to enhanced water quality. So at that time, we'll also bring you our data gathering plan and the report completion for 2020 to fully address the concerns. And so to conclude, by first quarter of 2021, we feel we will have the board a comprehensive stormwater report and a list of appropriate projects to make a stronger decision for the most appropriate stormwater rate. So thanks for letting me read that. I wanted to put that together and in context for you, because you're all assisting us with those meetings, and you're getting a lot of questions, and we want to provide a more detailed review for you.
Okay, thank you. Misty?
Yes, I just want to say thank you, Sherry. I really appreciate your intention to be accurate and transparent, and it is so important that we all understand all of the information so that we can make the best decision. So I support you and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right. Well, I would think that everyone here agrees with where we're at today. I have appreciated the discussions I've had with many folks about these issues, and they are complex. So I think it does make sense to slow down and figure out how we're going to answer this. And again, as I've told many people, we're not alone in this. It's not unique to Manatee County, so we need to look and see. And actually, we kind of are at an advantage. At first, I thought we were just at a big disadvantage, because we didn't do it. But we can also learn from the other communities that have implemented it and the changes they're making and follow up on that. So I think that's a good thing, so I appreciate that. Vanessa?
Yeah, just a quick note. Sherry, I want to say thank you for what you're doing right now. You're looking at the citizens, and you're taking them, you know, all into consideration, and you're trying to make sure that our citizens understand what's going on, the need, and how we need to move forward. So I commend you for that. I think that that's a really, really good step in the right direction. And, you know, it, there's been so much time and effort put into it, which is commendable, truly. But to see the need to carry it the next step is truly, you know, it shows great leadership from you and your, from the deputy county administrators, and also from our directors and staff that's been involved. And so I think, you know what, it shows that this county truly does listen to its citizens and is really trying to do the right thing. So I commend you for that. Thank you.
Okay. I'll go ahead and ask if anyone has any public comment about this decision at this time that the, I'm going to cancel the rest of the meetings. As I said, I had the best meeting.
I didn't have any.
That's why you had the best meeting. Me either. So that's what I'm saying. Priscilla, did you want to say something?
No.
Oh, I thought you went like this. All right. Anybody in the public want to make a comment on this decision at this time? And as we said, we'll have a press announcement to come out and clarify where we are. It doesn't mean that we're giving up. It just means we're stepping back and taking a look at where we are and, you know, how to move this thing forward. And it was a great work session last Tuesday. I really thought it was an excellent work session. So I'm excited about that. I know the folks in Misty's district are excited about having some options, and we look forward to hearing more about that. So anything else for the good of the order, commissioners?